I'd like to welcome both Mr. Starkey and Dr. Lallan to this meeting. Present, myself with the board, Scott Friedman, absent for this meeting, we have Herb Houston and Alex Pablo. This is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District withheld at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on May 27, 2020, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice posted to the Office of the District on May 22, 2020, 2:30 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours to the prime, to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence, we do have the presence of a quorum. All members are present, Dr. Lallan on Zoom, Jason Starkey on Zoom, myself, Scott Friedman at the boardroom, absent Herb Houston and Alex Pablo. Let me please get everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
United States of America, unto the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to protect us as we try to stay safe from the coronavirus, which has infected a lot, and so many. We ask that you help those that are researching for a cure to this virus, so I think with knowledge, we find a cure that will help everyone, especially those that are currently sick from the virus. Father, we ask for your continued blessings and for the wisdom that are, that will help us carry out this meeting for the Robert District, where it's through you, Lord, that we survive and continue to help those that we can. In Jesus' name we pray.
Moving along to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Anyone like to share anything at this time, staff, board, audience? Hello, welcome, Mr. Chairman, board and staff.
My name is Victor Valdovinos and I'm with the media consulting brand, Daxxus. I would like to give a brief report on the progress that we've made thus far. Posting on social media are going well. We had over 785 people reached over our Memorial Day posts. A meeting with Mr. Gaván regarding the July 4 preparation went very well, that happened today, and we want to make sure we have everything ready for July 4. It's never too early. And then since I walk and jog downtown, down Port Road nightly, almost nightly, I noticed some lights that were off and I met with Carlos to increase the security outside our building, and so we met today and we'll be working on that as, in the coming week, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. That's my report. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome-
Hey, I got a question for that guy. Can I, can I ask him here real quick?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I want to put a picture up real quick, if I can find it. Um, these dang, these dang computers so hard for me to figure out. Trying to find it, darn it. Um, okay, I can't find it, so I'm just gonna tell you guys. At Walmart, have you guys seen the picture at checkout of the ugly water thing?
They say bottled water doesn't touch that, will they have-
Have you seen it? It's, it's made by Primo.
Okay.
No.
You must have seen it. I found it. All right. This is at, I'm gonna put it up on the screen. This is at the checkout at Walmart. It says, because you might not be able to read it, your tap water can hang out in some pretty seedy joints. And then let me see if I can position that. You guys see that? It's a big, ugly, nasty pipe. It is right there. This is a big display. It's probably like six by five feet.
Wow.
Uh, and I think that that's, that that's bad for our business, and I, and I think, given the fact that we're superior water quality, that's sort of bogus, and I think that we should have a meeting with Walmart and ask them to take that picture down. I don't have a problem with the, the concept of this Primo water dispenser, but I do think that, uh, it's almost-
Penitent greeting.
Yeah, we could ask our legal what they think about it, but I think maybe, uh, the appropriate way to start by doing it would be with, with Carlos and, and our media consultant here going and, and what is your name? I'm sorry, I forgot your first name.
Victor.
Victor, that's right. I apologize, what a bum I am. But, uh, maybe get Carlos and Victor over there to, to visit with, with their manager and then see if they'd be interested in, in changing that advertisement.
We'll be there tomorrow morning, sir.
Sure, I do know the management there, they might, I'll let them know. Get it taken care of.
Good. You'll see it, you can't miss it, it's right there. They're about to get the LMWD hammer. I like it.
It's a product placement advertisement, but yeah, hopefully.
Can I also just like, since this is the open quorum, say I like Jason's new glasses.
Yep.
Got another doctor on board, I like it.
Okay, does that conclude the item three? Just, I'd like to thank everyone I know that's, you know, getting through all these unique times and adjusting, and I think everyone has done a good job and compliment our staff, management, this unique, unique times going on, I think everything is going well. I'd like to move along to item four, consider to discuss for possible approval of the minutes of the regular meeting for May 13, 2020. Everyone had a chance to read those, discuss them, consider.
I move to approve.
Motion for approval by Dr. Lallan.
Somebody should tell Jason Starkey that he also has to be moving to approve today.
Yes.
Second.
What's that? Yes, second, okay. All those are in favor, the motion carries. I, moving along to item number five, general managers' report.
He has an update on the COVID-19. We're still utilizing all, all the gloves that we came up with in the beginning, weighing the, using the face, the mask, facial mask, gloves here and there, and then wiping down our work areas, and we still have the main offices closed. We're trying to, we're trying to put a, a plastic shield up at the front, and Eddie's working on it to get it expedited, hopefully that, as soon as we can get that plastic shield up at the front for the customer service, that will open the front door for business. But we've been working pretty well with, through the window, we've had no complaints, everything's been working out pretty good, employees have been safe, no illnesses or a few, a few symptoms here and there, but they're totally a different, probably just infections in the ear and this and that, you know, nothing more serious than that. Let me see what else, but otherwise, we're still proceeding with all the protocols, trying to be safe. Okay, and then the next bullet that I have here is the American Water Board of Directors Association that we had registered and they postponed that conference, they moved it, moved it to June, and now they postponed it again and moved it to August, and if you see the, the backup, it's August, the 6th through August, the 8th. So, we have registered already and then they just moved the registration forward. Nothing else has been done, no flight arrangements or, or hotel arrangements yet until further time has passed by and finding out is they're gonna postpone again or not, then we'll make sure that we register for that one, the people and employees that have already registered for the conference. Any questions on that? Anybody else wants to attend, there's no, and we'll get you going on that one and get it registered. I think that'll, that's it for me on that one.
Okay. Thank you, Carlos. Let's move along to item six, consider to discuss for possible approval of annual updates to the Hurricane Operations Manual.
Okay, we've been meeting with staff and employees, management, employees and assistants, managers, to get all the information updated on the hurricane preparedness manual, and we finally completed it, and we're trying to get it approved by the board before June 1st. June 1st is considered the hurricane season, and it ends November 30th, so it's a full six months of hurricane season, and we wanna make sure that the board understands everything that's in there, the, I'm pretty sure that you all seen it, and we just need it approved so we can make copies and pass them on to everybody, and we'll get you a copy for you guys as soon as, possibly before the end of the week, we'll deliver. So, any questions or comments on it? Do need the board's approval, so get it going.
This is an approval item?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Starkey.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lallan, all those in favor, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item seven, Director of Operations Report.
Members, excuse me, members of the board, I just brought these pictures and a few items here that I wanted to show you, to you all. The first one is the, the digester at La Gravista wastewater plant, and that gets cleaned every eight to 10 years, and since it's not a, a normal activity, I thought I'd bring it to you so you could see how, how bad it gets and the work that these guys go through to clean it up. They finally had to use the vaccon to completely siphon, siphon everything out. As you can see, it had a lot of mop heads on those, those are air pipes that are coming down, that have on the very first picture, those are just full with mop heads, and of course, the second picture just shows all that sludge that's in there, was pretty much covered, it was up for like about a foot and a half, and a couple areas up there close to two feet. And so, had three guys go in there and just start, initially started shoveling it out, and then they got the vaccon and started just siphoning everything off, cleaned it up really good.
He said mop heads, or you mean physical household mop heads?
Well, they look like physical mop heads, but it's just an accumulation of rags and debris that just combines together and, and it just clogs up and it just looks like a mop head. It's, it's pretty gruesome, but, uh, the other item was the dredger, that's a newly purchased dredger. We started using it at the, at the reservoir in Water Pipe 1, in anticipation of getting that cleaned up, to get that water pipe going. As you can see on that third picture, it shows you a light streak right above on the top, and that represents where the dredger went through. Right there, that one. That blue part is, is where the dredger went through and cleaned up the, the grass and the sludge that was there.
That's the sunlight coming down on it?
I'm sorry, yes.
Sunlight.
That, that sunlight that's coming down on it, and it's doing a really good job. On the next picture, it shows where the operator has to do a bit of maintenance on it, but you can see on the, on the bottom that, it's got the grass on there and, and that he had to take some of it off so that he could get that place going again.
Water research equipment?
Yes, that was, that was something we just purchased this year, and the next page shows the, the sludge that we put into the reservoir, I mean into the lagoon. There's two lagoons, they're very much like this, and they, they fill up one of the lagoons and fill it up with, with water and sludge, and as the water is draining on that first lagoon, they start filling in the second lagoon so that we can take this sludge and, and take it to a monopill. Or, well, we're trying to see if we can get the permission just to go ahead and drop it there at Water Pipe 2 and, and fill in that area there, and Water Pipe 2.
The lagoons are filtration system.
Right, the, the water just seeps back into the reservoir, and leaves the sludge there, and as it dries up, then picked up and, and taken, taken out. The third item that I wanted to show you was a manhole, the collection crew had started viewing some of these manholes to make sure that we don't have one that is ready to collapse, and we found this one, it looked to be pretty much safe. We do have a manhole that we had purchased the last time, and we picked up several others, and so what we're going to, what they're going to do is just go ahead and put that other manhole that we have inside of this one, and-
Where is that?
This one is the Sheephead and Laguna, and, and as you can see, the second manhole, it's a block away on Corral and Laguna, and that's, both of these manholes are about the same age, they are the same age as far as we know, and as far as we know, they're, they are original, with go back 50, 60 years or so. So, you can see on that first picture, that one that looks like it's, they threw a bunch of rocks in there, it looks like it, it looks like it's ready to crumble, and, and that's what we're afraid of, so we want to take care of that before, before it does. That pretty much concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Let's move along to item number nine, item number eight, District Engineers Report, Charles.
So, the first item here is the, just an update from the State Highway 100 Gravity Sewer Extension, we're looking at it Port Isabel. I know we had talked about this project at the last meeting, so we went ahead and, you know, provided a report to talk about the, the site business that we've had with owners, so we did go out there and meet with every, with each store or business there on May 19th, and provided a little summary of each location. So, you know, you have, you know, we have sewer problems as recent as the week prior to our visit, so, so, you know, some, some are in worse condition than others, but in general, there, these, you know, private lift stations tend to be headaches that they would love to see go away, so, so it's just, you know, we've initiated that landowner coordination. I mean, we don't have prices yet, but that's kind of what it comes down to as far as how much of the cost is involved, but at least we've initiated that contact with the landowners, mailed out formal letters, just, just so we can start that conversation. And so that's, that's, you know, the main, we did receive survey, so we're starting to begin the actual sign for, for the alignment as well, so I don't know if there's any comments on that, or we can move on to the next section. Right? And then just a sample letter's here in here as well, and, and so basically, the next item is just, we're looking at the lift station rehabilitation, a 90% design workshop, and the workshop is intended just for, just for operations, I mean, it wasn't intended to be something with the board, and, but we are, since we did receive that survey for the pipelines, rather than have it on June 5th, where we would only be looking at the lift stations, we were gonna reschedule that for July 17th, so we can address the pipelines and the lift stations as a new visitor. So that's, that's basically our, our, you know, update on that project, and, you know, the main issues are Lift Station 1, just being in poor condition where those pumps are under last breath, and then at Lift Station 17, it's forced me in Alami Duriya, and we had two breaks in one weekend, so it's, we're just trying to look at getting these, these aged parts of our system replaced through this project, but that's, and that, yeah, that basically, you know, as, as far as with, with the survey, kind of coming in a little slow, our, our construction schedule has been impacted by about 30 days, but that's pretty much sums up the update for our, for our lift station rehab project. And that includes the engineer's report.
Thank you. Move along to item number nine, consider to discuss for possible approval of change order number one of MPC E for altitude valve additions for SCADA upgrade and elevator storage tanks.
Right, so, so this job, we're trying to add controls at our water plant to open and close the altitude valves at each elevator storage tank, and so the, we were able to get the drawings, the coordinated the work with our SCADA contractor, and so they, they provided the, the change order for an increase of $14,930 to add those additional controls, you know, that'll help our water plant operators be able to have that remote control of opening and closing the valves at, at these elevator storage tanks, so it'd be the benefit to, you know, improve the system.
This is a approval item. Is there a motion out there?
Yeah, sorry. I motion to approve.
Motion for approval by Dr. Lallan, seconded by Mr. Starkey, all those in favor, they, they are. Motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item number 10, consider to discuss for possible approval of professional services with Greece and Nichols for anti-buoy wastewater treatment plant, potential copper limit.
Right, yeah, this item is a task authorization, I'm gonna be based on the, you know, actual time form, but we're requesting a task authorization not to exceed $21,302, but basically, the state of this permit renewal for anti-buoy sewer plant is we're gonna hold off on publishing the second notice, so we can coordinate and to see if we can make this copper limit less stringent or possibly prevent it from being added to the, to the permit as whole. So, so, so this is a task authorization, we're requesting to have that coordination with TCQ. They have already given us some feedback that they can, they call it a water effects ratio, which is something within TCQ where they can analyze the stream and, you know, most likely come up with a less stringent copper limit than what was put in the draft from here. So, we're requesting this task to coordinate that work.
For $21,000?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, what was that, by Dr. Lallan and seconded by Mr. Starkey, with all those in favor, they are, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item 11, consider to discuss for possible approval of agreement with SWG Engineering for engineering design bid and construction phase services for water plant number one, clarify, re, clarify rehabilitation project.
Yeah, this is the, the engineer's contract, this follow-up to the board we gave at the last meeting with Sigler, Washington-Greenwood, you know, the scope work addressing that clarified replacement, and, and so we're requesting an amount not to exceed $210,873.75. Just, yeah, this first page has an assembly for the scope looking for.
Motion to approve.
There was a motion for approval by Dr. Lallan, seconded by Mr. Starkey, or all those in favor, they are. Excuse me, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item number 12, consider to discuss for possible approval of budget amendment for engineering costs related to improving, renovating and equipping water treatment plant number one, intended to be reimbursed by future tax exempt obligations to be issued by the Laguna-Madre Water District.
Yeah, this item is just increasing the, the budget to cover what we anticipate the engineering expenses will be at the fiscal year, that the design phase will be coming up to about 146.
Does it need an acknowledgement?
Yeah, this would require approval since it's a budget increase, but to our current fiscal year.
What's the overall increase? 146?
Yeah, 146.95. It's, it's a portion of the contract that we expect, I mean, here's the schedule, just, it's, it's the preliminary design phase and the final design phase of the contract we just approved, being included in this year's budget.
So we're just moving it forward?
Yes.
A motion to approve.
Was that a motion for approval by Dr. Lallan?
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Starkey.
Yes.
Are all those in favor? They are. Carries, thank you. Let's move along to item 13, Director of Finance Report.
Thank you, Charles.
Gentlemen, at the last meeting, I presented some revenue numbers for, for April, and one of the requests was a, a report on consumption, so I have that available today in your, in your packet. As you can see, so far this year, each month throughout the fiscal year, our consumption has been higher than the same period of the year before, and that's been consistent, including April, which was the month that was most affected by the shelter in place order. So far in May, we just have a partial month, so it's not really comparable at this time, but I included a chart at the bottom that shows you how we're doing this year consumption wise compared to the last few fiscal years.
Excuse me for a minute, Orlando, can you zoom in a little bit more, please, the top of the screen? Thank you.
Are you hearing me okay?
I am hearing you, I just want to see the data.
Okay, great. There are no questions about that, I'll go on to the next bullet point, which is the, an update on our budget. So last meeting, we discussed some, some revenue numbers, and I want to talk about now some projections. Just a reminder, these are projecting what I think will happen in the future, so there's a lot of assumptions that go into these numbers, but right now, my, my assumption is that, that revenues will gradually increase over the next few months through September, and with that, our projections for revenues will still fall short of what the budget, at 280, 82,000, approximately below the, what we expected as far as revenues. On the expenditure side, we, we are, right now, we're short on, of the budget, so we've been, we've been saving on the expenditure side, and so that is expected the net to be $1.9 million of revenues over expenditures. Now, collections have also not, not been a problem, I have the latest collection figures, and the, we're on active accounts, we're only have 1.32% over 30 days of active accounts, so that's not, we're not having an issue right now with, with past due accounts. Do you have any questions, members?
Yeah, why are we saving so much money?
The, the biggest cause of the, of the reduction in expenditures is from transfers to, to debt service. So, we, we transfer money from, from our revenues to cover our, our debt payments, we transfer them into a debt service fund, and we use those, those funds to, to pay our revenue supported bond debts. Now, basically, I, I discovered an error in there where we had budgeted for, for bond payments that had not yet been issued, so when we, when we adopted the budget, there was bonds that were still in the works, that we hadn't finalized and hadn't been issued. So by the time the, the bond was, was finalized and issued, the payment schedule was different than the one that had been used when the budget process was, was approved. So that difference, we never went back and, and adjusted those numbers to reflect what the actual payments were. So the effect was that we ended up having extra money in that debt service fund, because we were transferring basically too much money, and so now we have a, a fund balance in that debt service fund that we can use to make those bond payments. So now I'm not transferring the, the money that's needed, I'm only transferring the money that's needed, trying to use up that fund balance, and the result is that we have extra money now available in the, the general fund.
Throw me some dates, when did this start? When did we start transferring too much money in?
This has been going on for, for years. Yeah.
Three years or 10 years? Three years or ten years?
I don't, I I can't, I don't know exactly how many years it's been building up. But it's been building up since before I.
These are all good things, this is not a bad thing.
Well, should I go through the construction budget?
Yeah, it's good we have money, it's bad we went through audits for all these years and nobody's ever seen this. So it's, I mean, it's a little bit of a cause for concern when we got two million more dollars in a place and then it should be.
No, it's it's one million.
One million more dollars in place, you know, than than we should be. How did you find it?
Well, in this in this in this process, we're out, we had gone back and asked all the managers to look at their budgets, figure out where they could, you know, postpone making purchases, where they could possibly postpone projects, not fill vacant positions. Well, that that included myself, who started looking at at the 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 budgets and the funds available, looking for every dollar and and up finding this discrepancy, why we have extra money in that fund. And researching it, trying to figure out how did this money get there, where it's been coming from. That's what I found.
So was this something that happened like every month, we were putting in ten grand too much? Or all at once, a big payment was made? Tell me a little bit more.
No, so this is money that so at the at in the beginning of the year, we figure out, okay, we're going to have, let's say, one point two million dollars in in payments, right? And so in in revenue supported bond payments. So I have to transfer that money every every month to break that up into monthly payments to make sure that I that I have enough. I'm not just going to take one point two million out of out of our operating accounts. So I break that up into smaller monthly payments.
Yep.
And start transferring it. And so that those numbers are determined at at budget time. And then so apparently what's happened in the past is those bonds that were in the works, the the payments ended up getting postponed. So we we thought we were going to need, ended up being different than the amount that we actually had to pay that year.
I see. Glad it didn't disappear.
We got your knowledge.
I'm sorry?
Acknowledged, is that what we're doing?
Yes, yes, these are just for discussion items. So the the next item that we wanted to discuss was a what we're doing to to help our customers. So just wanted to remind the board that we are we are not disconnecting for nonpayment. We are also not penalizing any customers who who pay after the the due date. And we're also offering payment arrangements for anybody that is is not able to pay their whole bill on time. We also conducted a a survey of area utilities here in the Rio Grande Valley to find out what what they were doing as well. And the vast majority are doing the the same things that we are. And there's three in addition that were also waiving credit card fees. And our our credit card fees are go directly to a third party. So I'm not sure if we would be able to do that, but that's that's the the difference. There was one utility in Cameron County that's offering a bill assistance. And that's because they have created a fund by they have an additional fee that they that they charge all their customers. And that the money from that fee goes into a customer assistance account. And and what they did, so that has been existing in in P U B for years. And during this pandemic, they they added additional money in there just to to help people out. And that that's all that's going on here in in El Agua County. There El Agua County qualified for the CARE Act. The there's a threshold of five hundred thousand people to qualify for the CARE Act funds. And El Agua County qualified, Cameron County did not. Cameron County has less than than five hundred thousand people. So in in El Agua County, the utilities over there are just referring customers that that are requesting assistance with their bill, they're referring them to the Cameron County who has funds available to the CARE Act.
And then we added that plan that was requested a while back by Mr. Starkey to assist our customers. And then it's a plan that could be utilized if the board desires to. And I put a memorandum in there so you can see how it would work similar to that example that I said in there. And we did talk to our our financial advisor and our bond counsel and and our legal counsel here. And we're we're trying to find out if, did you all understand that example that I set up for you? You have any questions on it?
Yeah, but it doesn't really appear like we really need it right now.
No, not right now, it seems like we're doing okay. Yes, customers haven't asked for any assistance or or they haven't asked for any help in in their payments or failed to pay the bills. They comply with all our billing. So but it it's a good plan if if it ever, you know, the board decides to. I think we, this coming month would be a hard month also because there's that pandemic is still going on strong. I haven't seen, and I know that that the government already opened everything, but I I don't understand. Our revenues are still coming in.
So just keep analyzing and see.
Analyzing some more?
Keep analyzing and keep it out there if we need it.
So but it is available. Just Mr. Starkey, just to answer your your opportunity there that that we do have available. Hopefully, if you have any questions on it, you can ask me now and or call me later. But as of right now, it looks like just recommendation, just to hold off on it and forward until we analyze this this month and bring some more reports back.
This is just a discussion item, so there's no action rights needed. So we'll move on to the next item, which is just an update on our our investments. We had three CDs that that matured this this month. And due to the action taken by the Federal Reserve Bank to reduce interest rates to try to to spur some 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 growth in the economy, it affected the 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 interest that we're earning for the the funds that we have in bank. So these these CDs that were maturing that had an interest rate between one point five and two point six percent. The best offer that that we got was one year at point six percent interest. So it's a significantly less, but it's still more than than just leaving it in the in our our operating account at the bank. We did a put an additional five hundred thousand in there just to to try to increase that return a little bit more.
Any other questions, comments? Let's move along to item fourteen. Consider and discuss for possible approval of the purchase of a trailer for the distribution department.
Chairman, members of the board, we purchased some trailers back in February, it was already approved by by the board. One of them didn't work for us. We are, I'm here back to, so we can approve again a transportation trailer because we need to be flat the whole day. Now, when we receive, it has two two pumps, it has drive over fenders. And that caused a safety issue for us and we couldn't load the the excavator.
So we never took possession of it.
So there is a price difference, but we're still within budget.
So we basically need to get a better trailer, is that what it is?
Yes, it's different, yes.
We ordered the wrong trailer.
It wasn't flat the whole day. That's that's the difference between this this flatbed versus the.
Right, move to approve. Motion for approval by Dr. Lallan. Seconded by Mr. Starkey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are none opposed, motion carries, thank you. Let's move along to item fifteen. Consider remove from the table the following item tabled at the regular meeting on May thirteenth. Consider and discuss for possible approval backup generator for the main office. We want to take action. So no action on this item at this time, so I thought. Sixteen, consider and discuss for possible approval backup of generator for the main office, no action. Seventeen, consider and review the expenditures for May seventeenth, or excuse me, May first, twenty twenty through May fifteenth. Everyone had a chance to look at them, acknowledge them.
Acknowledge.
Acknowledged by Dr. Lallan and Mr. Starkey, thank you. We'll move along to item eighteen. Executive session permitted by the Open Meetings Act, V T C A Government Code, Section five five one zero zero one, head sequence under Section five five one zero seven one, consultation with attorney under Section five five one zero seven four, personal matters. Item A, deliberating regarding the valuation of the district employee to a general manager. Item B, update on land swap between the city of Port Isabel and Laguna Madre Water District at the Little League Maintenance Yard. Item C, update on FEMA related to Hurricane Dolly two thousand eight payment plan for recoupment of funds request. Need a motion going into executive session at six fifteen P M.
No move.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Dr. Lallan, are all those in favor, they are. We'll go into executive session, those that aren't involved in executive session, please ask if you can dismiss. Need a motion come out of executive session at six eighteen P M. Motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Dr. Lallan, thank you, we're out of executive session. Item A, deliberation regarding the valuation of District Two with General Manager, no action. Item B, update on land swap between the city of Port Isabel and Laguna Madre Water District at Little League Maintenance Yard, proceed as directed. Item C, update on FEMA related to Hurricane Dolly two thousand eight payment plan for recoupment of funds requested, proceed as directed. Need a motion to exit this meeting at six nineteen P M. So motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by a Dr. Lallan, so we are out of meeting.